The order, Monday, October tenth, twenty twenty-two, six o'clock P. M. Can we get a roll call, please?
Here.
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 First item is approval of the agenda.
Over to approve.
Second. Dane, discussion. Being none, council, please vote. Approved takes us to the Leadership Nevada twenty twenty-two presentation.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kayla Bergman.
Emily Shack.
Wade Presley. Um, the reason that we're here for you tonight is uh to kind of give you a brief explanation of a leadership Nevada project that we've shared uh some more details with you. Um, so Leadership Nevada is an initiative that has monthly sessions about various aspects of the community, government, and so forth. And then at the end of the process that started in January is to develop a project to improve the community. And so what we're here to uh kind of share with you tonight is our small group. Came up with a few ideas that we kicked around to what uh and what to pursue. And this is the idea that we we landed on as far as exploring the idea of an outdoor classroom. And so.
Kayla, do you want to give us some more details?
Yeah, so one of the uh first sessions of Leadership Nevada, we took a bus tour around town and we toured or I guess drove by the site of the new wastewater treatment plant and learned from uh city leaders that there is a lot of land down there. And we thought it would be a good opportunity for an educational site, recreation site uh to benefit our community and the school system. Um, we uh are all familiar with uh in the small group, we are all familiar with uh the idea of outdoor classrooms or outdoor learning environments. So it's a area for natural play. Um, it's an opportunity for schools to take their students out there um a science class even to learn about uh more like sciency things. It is an opportunity for um our classes to go and get expired or English classes to go and uh have an outdoor space to write even. Um, so these uh outdoor classrooms are across the state and uh nation and that that Nevada could use one and that would be a good site for that. So this report we put together uh kind of goes through uh exploring that idea and outlines uh several items that Emily is going to go through with you. This is obviously a huge project, something that would take multiple years to actually complete and come to fruition. Our piece of it, because we are in leadership Nevada until the end of the year um for graduation, our goal was to put together a plan. So that's what you guys have in front of you. Um, the parts of our plan were coming up with, well, we have the location um and then figuring out how we would fund this, who we would have help partner with us, maybe um who would have interest in helping design, helping do the labor, that kind of thing. Some uh people we talked to who said, yes, we're interested in helping in some capacity. Uh, we talked to people at the Nevada School District, including um Kevin Cooper with the FFA, Mike Cox with the Story County Conservation, that they'd have some interest in helping uh Jason Kingsbury with uh Parks and Rec Country Landscapes. They are actually working on um a plan for us right now. Um, I also talked with the Eagle Scouts and throughout the idea that they could help with some projects, they could even help come up with some ideas for for what our outdoor space should look like. So um, so those are people we talked to, kind of gave them uh an idea of what we were looking for and asked them to help help plan, help give ideas, help with the labor and that sort of thing. Um, and then funding wise, Kayla, I'll turn that back to you. Yeah, so there's an opportunity for uh through the Iowa DOT for a grant. Um, they actually help through the design process and implementation. There is a match required there, but we lay out opportunities for um local grants. We learned about uh Key Cooperative does matching grants as well. Um, and then there's a potential with the Case IH um in between Ames and Nevada to support the project as well. There's lots of opportunities for um funding the project if you were to move forward with this idea. Um, anything else you wanted to say? All right. Well, at this point, we um again want you to review this report that we put together. Let us know if you have any questions. Um, we graduate from Leadership Nevada in November, but we are still excited about this project and would love for you to reach out to us individually or collectively. Um, and let us know if you have any questions. We would love to have you uh implement this in your future plans and uh implement a not our classroom at the wastewater treatment plan. Thank you. Any question?
Council, anything for leadership?
I have a question in general, too, actually. Would this be considered like a park area for the city? Like, we have our parks and stuff. Would this kind of fit in that category? I'm thinking about being a Debbie Downer. I'm thinking about like insurance-wise. You know, I see in here you have climbing stuff, a lot of cool things. I think this is a great idea. But I mean, would that where it would fall in kind of that realm or that umbrella of like what we would be for a park, more of a park?
I think it really would probably uh depend on what we have out there. Right now, some of this stuff is preliminary and we're we're talking about different trees, plants, things along those lines. Like Emily mentioned, we are waiting on a concept from Country Landscapes.
So I'm getting the cart ahead of the horse, is what you're saying.
Yeah, okay. But see, but uh depending on what is out there, yeah, that it could be a possibility. Yeah.
The other thing I've thought of, I know with um when if we call it a classroom or whatever and we have a a congregation of kids, people, whatever, do we have to do we have to budget in like a restroom facility for this?
A one and multi-use. Some of them had um units or numbers of hives. How do you count hives? Uh, that so that like we limit to the number of chickens in a backyard, they would they were limiting um hives in decorum and of and having a flight path barrier. Um, some of the other communities had a special use permit or a license. The most expensive one I saw was a hundred dollars. Um, like you would license a dog apparently in their community. I saw that the the Clinton City, Clinton is on the eastern eastern border. Um, I used to, I student taught there. And so it was interesting to see that they were using setbacks and supplying a water source as a recommendation from the city nuisance, you know, the ordinance folks. Um, it wasn't like in their ordinance, but they but they said when there was a mention from a neighbor or somebody that that's what that's the information they went to next in that encouragement. Um, most of the communities that were listed there um had no restrictions, but they also had no permission. Um, and so if somebody was having issue and they got to the point of a dispute or a nuisance, um, they had, nobody had a leg to stand on because there was nothing. So I was just, I was just interested in talking. I miss it. Like I said, I missed the conversation the last time. Um, what is best management practices? If we're not going to be specific about the water source, and I think that was part of the problem with the the water feature, the pool um and a flight path barrier, because we talked, I got here when you talked about the creek being close enough. I don't, and and especially the dialogue I had with the person that was monitoring um the I O B Association was that the drought would contribute to the need for the bees to go as close as possible and not make it. And the creek would not have been very attractive this year at all compared to something that's pooled. So um I just didn't know what best practices meant. I was hoping Lance would be here and he would ask.
Right. Really? Um, and I don't think water stores change everything. I don't know who's oh, but I could guess is my backyard neighbor and their young um and also the way that he was going through the pool.
Oh, right, certainly.
Much more aggressive about that than you. And honeybees aren't aggressive in general. So yeah, like I know if if it was my backyard neighbor, their kids are but like, you know, we took our honeybees away, that's not going to solve the problem with the wasps in their pool. But I mean, yeah, like if the water source is bad, you can put a bird bath out and it's not have a hole in there, the guest water in it, but they go it's right there. So they're not, you can't if you like, if we can control bees and make them fly, they want to fly and go to the water we want them to go.
All right, living things. Right, well, they're living things. And that's what that's part of what I was wanting to hear is for the sake of the bees, there's some best management practices, but then what's what about the sake of the humans around them? And that's just, I mean, you can't, you can't guarantee, I can't guarantee where, you know, a dog goes. Um, but that I guess my concern was that it came to, it came to me as couldn't use it like past summers. So what's changed in your practices that might have contributed to that? Or that I know that there's been a bazillion wasps, but you know, like can we eliminate some of the variables here? Um, so.
Aren't the wasps all over?
Oh, yeah, no, I would agree. They're thirsty.
I mean.
I mean, have you added, have you added things? Have you taken things away? I mean, is Lance trying something new?
And I I have a hole to take it away. Was the mayor. We also have water tanks available. So first of all. My water is, so I mean.
Right. But and I don't mean to hold court, but what if it's somebody else, someplace else that doesn't have a garden and doesn't have a bird bath? And how do, how, where, how, what are the best practices about making sure your neighbors are safe? But if we don't ask other people to have a water feature in their own yard with the bees, then are we you know, are we going to be sitting here listening to other complaints about people's honeybees, not just you?
Do you think uh what having a water feature requirement in the code would um smooth over some of the issues you've heard from other citizens?
I don't know. I'm just hoping, I just, I just wanted to know what best management practices meant. If that, if they're committed.
I have to talk to one of his classmates.
That's not, I, from what I've read, that's not best practice.
I imagine the water table. They, and he checks the level of mites because.
Well, no, I, it's not you I'm worried about. It's if we, we, there are not very many communities that actually have an intentional beekeeping code and ordinance.
So would it, would it be easier just to leave number four in that? So although we know that you have the water source, we make sure that everybody else.
Those two, yeah.
Even, but even number five, the barrier was not just suggested by the Clinton City, Clinton City staff, but required flight path barriers. I assume that's what that is. Um, because under five, you know, some of the, some of the communities that actually have the license.
Uh.
I don't know how kind, what kind of barrier you could build.
A six-foot fence.
It's just.
A six-foot.
That's not gonna.
Privacy. I said, I mean, I said, I read it. It was just like a privacy fence, a six-foot high. I put, so if I let the bushes in my yard grow six foot, my husband won't allow that, then it would just, you know, filter, it would be like a fence in our yard. Barb, could we just, could we start with the water and see what happens? I mean, we're talking about one bee.
Yeah, I know. But that's, like I say.
Well, and
Having two regulars.
And and honestly, after I read that email, I did a little research myself. I'm surprised because bees don't like chlorine.
Right.
And and I'm guessing, and and I'm just hypothesizing that we had a super dry summer last year. And I'm guessing that was their option. You know, they don't, from what I got, and I wish I'd have brought the paper. I I didn't, I didn't know we'd really get this in depth to it. I was, Barb just beat me to bring it enough, but it said that, you know, this guy that I emailed said bees don't like chlorine. You know, they don't normally bother hot tubs, pools, but he said it was so dry last year that that might have been their option, you know, so maybe like Sandy just said, maybe we do the water thing and 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 leave it at that because that's obviously not going to affect you guys because you have a water source. You know, I don't know that we need to put in there that it has to be so many gallons per minute and somebody's going to need now. But then that might be like, I think, I don't, I think Sandy just said to them, then we know the next person that wants to have bees in town that they don't live in the desert, so to speak, and they don't have water, you know?
Yeah, because Barb hit on something too. What we craft here, you know, we have a good situation here, but not every situation is going to be as good. So yeah, you know, there could be another property line that has a kid's play set there rather than a railroad and things like that. So it's important to think through.
Can we amend this to leave number four in?
Yeah, we definitely can. We unamend it.
Do it, Steve.
So you need to amend the motion, then. Yeah.
I just finally it.
You, so Barb, you made the motion, so you can make an amendment to your motion with that revision and Dane, you were the second.
That. Uh, yeah, that's, that's good.
And then one question I had too, listening to Barb, so if there are complaints, is it animal control that deals with it on our end? Because it was interesting that they actually dealt with it through animal control elsewhere, and I hadn't thought about that.
Um, that's a, that's a great question. I do not know the answer to that, but I would, I would think it would probably be Ryan, actually. Because if you're animal control, we should. It could be animal control as well, but I I think it would probably be under Ryan because it would be the nu- a nuisance, but.
If Ryan's here, he needs to come spray him a lot.
You haven't had to take care of any like bears or any other things on this list before?
Alligators and squirrels.
I mean, that'd be pretty cool if we had bears and alligators. We're not, yeah.
Not a big problem.
It'd be all right.
But yeah, and I, I guess the other piece of the puzzle is knowing how precious honeybees are to us. If there was somebody that wasn't taking, excuse me, wasn't taking good care of their irritated their neighbors, is there a way to move so that they could just be adopted by someone else that we wouldn't have to destroy them? Okay, so we wouldn't have to destroy them. Right, that's what I thought.
Here's a really great documentary.
Yeah, I've heard about that, too. Yeah.
Council, anything else on the bees? Okay, and council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to old business B, ordinance number ten thirty-five, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Northern submitting the city code of ordinances of the city of Nevada, Iowa, two thousand and five, by adding chapter one fifty-nine vacant property to establish a vacant property code registration maintenance program, second reading.
Over to approve.
Second. Jason, Steve, discussion. Being none, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to C, approve pay request number sixteen for wastewater treatment facility improvements phase two from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, the amount of two million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Move to approve.
Sorry, Sandy, Jason, discussion. None, council, please vote. That is approved. Takes us to D, pay request number eight, wastewater treatment facility improvements phase three from Boomerang Corporation, the amount of four hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-five cents.
Approve. Second.
Dane, Brian, discussion. Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. Anything that is approved, takes us to reports. No, never mind. Got one more. New business, new business A, resolution number forty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, a resolution to approve collateral assignment of development agreement.
Who do approve?
Sorry, Steve, Brian, discussion. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote. Okay, that is approved. Now reports, starting with city administrator.
All right. Uh, so a couple of weeks ago, we went to the Fall Conference and that was uh pretty good. I thought some of the classes there were better than the previous years. Uh, this week, I I've been working on a Pizza Pie Loser grant and that's due Friday, so I'll I'm having actually Brenda review it right now to make sure I hit everything and then I'm going to be submitting that. We start CIP planning tomorrow with our staff. And then I also wanted to provide a reminder that strategic planning is twelve-thirty on Friday. And there will be some, some snacks and stuff like that. Uh, so if you want to eat before, you can, but there'll be things to munch on as well.
Is that here?
It is here, yeah. It's in the council chambers. And you have my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that as well.
Hey, so moving on from my report, um, yeah, the league conference this year, there were some really good material. Couple items that I was particularly following up on is Waterloo does a really nice job with housing rehab. And I think that's something that would be nice for us as a community to figure out how to encourage, promote, and assist with rehab of the housing stock. Um, and especially some of the houses we went by. I mean, there were some that I'm going, that sucker just needs to come down, but they did some really beautiful work on some of those homes that, especially some that were done when you saw the photo and you saw the the house, like it was amazing what they saved. So I think there are some that might even be on our totally abandoned list that maybe might even have some of that to it. So um, yeah, just continue work around that. And then also a lot of communities, we, we've had a lot of discussion here about public art. And I know Sandy's part of a big um kind of catalyst project in that arena, but there are some arts commissions that are city commissions that help to facilitate that and also be able to apply and leverage some grants. So that's another second piece that I brought back as an action item. Any questions for me? I want also checks. So thank you for those of you that have done them. And Sandy, have you done, done any of the check review yet?
I would love to.
Okay, so Sandy, Dane, and Brian, I think are left. So there's two back there now. So I don't know if anyone has time this week to grab a stack and we can decide which of you three are going to grab the two that are back there.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so these two get this one and then Brian, and then I'll start back over and then we'll continue through. So awesome. Anything else for me? Council reports.
Well, I can, I can report, sorry, Steve, that we had some folks in to plan a December fourteenth meeting here in Nevada that will be a combination of the state's um empire empower rural Iowa initiative along with the Iowa Rural Development Council. That will be on December fourteenth and a great opportunity for us to showcase Nevada. So I know Brenda's on it in a big way and others, so it'll be a great opportunity.
Sorry, I couldn't make the planning meeting, so let me know if there's anything you need from me on the day. Happy to do whatever, so. Any other council reports?
Uh, Camelot Theater Foundation had their fundraising concert on the first with Great Caesar's Goat, had a great time, uh brought some good awareness to the campaign to restore the windows. Actually got some uh coverage on uh Channel Eight. Yesterday, yeah. So that was kind of fun. Always good to get uh Nevada in front of those folks and uh.
They have a plug on where they could write a check?
You did a great job.
Even better.
So, yeah, we'll keep it rolling.
Any other reports? Hey, Aaron, you got anything? You've been practicing with Rick.
Good evening, council. I'm putting my Nevada Foundation hat on tonight, so want to give you an update as it relates to the Human Services Fund. Think back to April and uh, so that's really the last time I was here to visit about it. So the foundation met last week. And so I want to give you a kind of where we're sitting on that to make sure we're all really on the same page. Um, as we work to transition that the foundation will be taking a lead role in awarding those funds, I'd remind folks that we'll be uh directing the funding uh only to really three categories, food, uh clothing and shelter. And as part of the application process, we'll be asking our applicants to really drive home. What is the specific use of the funds? Um, remember, they'll need to go to a five-on-one C. Remember, they'll need to go to a five oh one C three, and if somebody doesn't have that designation, they could also go to a four oh three B, which is a unit of government. Um, they don't have that designation, the organization will need to uh align themselves with somebody willing to be a fiscal sponsor. Um, it's my understanding that there's been forty thousand put into the budget, so effective with July one. Uh, there'd be forty thousand dollars available in funding. The timeline that we're proposing is a deadline of four o'clock on December thirtieth. And um just to temper expectations uh in the application, I've noted that we would make funding awards by February fifteenth. Now, I would hope uh that we could move a little quicker on that, uh but just giving ourselves a little wiggle room in case there's a lot. And this will be the first review for some of the folks. So speaking of the review committee, what we're proposing is two members from the foundation, two members appointed from the city council, and then three uh appointments from the community. So folks without necessarily a conflict in an organization, uh but uh after all, these are taxpayer dollars and so um making sure that the community is represented. So I would propose that those three appointments also perhaps come from the council. Uh, so that would give us a committee of seven. I'm only facilitating the process and not voting, so I will not be one of the board members voting, so we'll appoint uh other folks there. Um, this is a lot of changes. So what we're proposing is a Q R code that'll go out on our digital media in our our Nevada publication, and it would link back to an application that's actually on the foundation's website. So what what I'm proposing is also since this is new is that we'd actually do a workshop, a public workshop to talk through the application process to help folks understand fiscal agents. Um, help them understand um a little bit of brevity in the application and making sure that they're really getting at the the need for the funds as it relates to food, clothing and shelter. And so um the one thing we haven't really discussed um is do we want a minimum or maximum um just to somewhat set expectations on that? That is something that hasn't been discussed. So um I know the foundation board's anxious to get rolling on this and we're partners with you all on this, so um I'm here to take your comments. Um, probably at the next council meeting. Well, actually, we don't need you to select those folks yet because we've got, we've launched the um target to launch the application on around the first. Um, and so that's why we would hit the workshop shortly thereafter. So we'd launch the application and we'd also announce the workshop and um I'm available to help people even if they can't make the workshop workshop on that. So what do you have for questions for me, comments? Are we tracking with what the intentions of the council were in terms of moving the funds to the foundation to administer? Um, we'll um come back and make sure we report where those funds have went. And then we'll report again on the backside um as we get the evaluation reports in in more or less proof that they spent the funding. Uh, we'll be back to do a closeout report as well uh ahead of taking more funding next year. So.
I do have one question, Brenda. So we, one of the intents, I think, was that we would be leveraging with our public dollars, we would be leveraging some other private funds. Is there any then promotion of other grant opportunities through the foundation or other ways that might connect the applicants?
You know what? We we didn't talk about that, but that's certainly a part of the application for them to identify leveraged funds. So um yeah, I think we we think on that and where there's other places to.
Great. I think to me, that's a really important change of taking it out of just being a city activity and getting it over into the nonprofit world.
So Sandy, you're talking about some assistance to assist those groups to figure out where there might be other sources?
Well, or even I know that there's there are other grants available even through the foundation or other funding opportunities there. So just making them aware of.
I think that would be a good thing also to talk about at the workshop or where where are the good sources of being able to um, you know, I think about housing, I'm looking at bar, but um housing and being able to point to the Story County Housing Trust Fund and some of those kind of obvious things that or even some of the private foundations that are willing to support projects here. So um, but yeah, I think that that's something very much that we'd be able to provide a link to and give a full of bullets um on that. So noted. Any other comments? I'm sure there will be things when we sit uh in June or whenever we're going to evaluate this process, there'll be things that I'm sure we'd say, gosh, here's a pinch point we need to improve on that. But first go around and again, I think looking at lessons um that I learned from when I administered a county foundation before terms of it is helpful to talk to them through the uh on the front side about how you want the applications put together. So.
I think that's terrific. The workshop idea would be something and a value add that we didn't have before. So I think we're looking for value add to the how do we be more.
So we'll all need to push that out on our own digital media as well as to say, just, I mean, we need those connections. We'll promote it, I think, through all of our boards as well that are likely to to be involved. So other questions? Well, that's my report tonight on the twenty-fourth. We'll be back on talking economic development. So.
Thanks, Brenda. Like she mentioned, we'll be turning to a couple council members to volunteer for the committee. So some of you might get tapped. This.
Um. So uh Lane, uh who just uh four or five weeks graduated from the academy, he is pushing halfway through his F T O. He's doing well. Um, so and we are full staff. Uh, we're excited to get him going after F T O. It really helped the schedule. Um, I think in the packet, was it last council meeting or this council meeting with the traffic project? Was it this one? Yeah. So we did a traffic project last month. The multi-agency um project normally uh to end out the contract year, we do it at night. This year we switched it up during the daytime, so we focused on texting, seatbelt speed, um, you know, and impairment if there is. And uh we were really successful. Um, we had about sixty stops. Um, so uh people knew right away that we were out there, so we started seeing a lot of slower speeds on Highway thirty coming over the hill. Um, we did have a speed on highway or interstate thirty-five, almost a hundred miles an hour. So we're seeing that more and more with the speed uh for whatever reason. Um uh, we don't know why, but we're going to continue to be out there. Um, we just started our new contract with G T S B, so we were granted more money this year for overtime enforcement uh for impaired driving and also to just general enforcement. And also too, we got more money for purchasing of equipment, P B Ts and car cameras, radar units, that type of thing. So um we closed out our last contract September thirtieth, and I think we didn't spend I don't know, it was under a thousand dollars, so we got most of it spent. Um, which was good and forty-five hundred dollars of that was used to buy the message board. And that's, if you haven't seen it, it's been deployed a few times. Uh, we got graphics on it now. Um, so so, yeah, we're we're pretty happy about that. So um.
Questions? Yeah. Karen.
Good to tell you that you have a full update.
Okay. Okay, council, anything for Larry? Aaron.
I'm good as well.
Counsel, anything else before we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Dane, Sandy, all those in favor? Please say nay. You're adjourned.
Be dokey.